Hello, I'm Lesley Cullum, Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And on behalf of the League, I am pleased to welcome you to this candidate forum sponsored by the League in partnership with the city of Murfreesboro. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent opportunity for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. We appreciate the support from Murfreesboro City Government provided by Alan Bozeman and his staff. They enable broadcasting and streaming of our forums to reach a large number of voters. The League seeks to conduct our forums in a nonpartisan manner. Key participants, especially the moderator, are not publicly aligned with any candidate. In the upcoming Murfreesboro City Elections, you will be voting for important positions in city government such as Murfreesboro City School Board and Murfreesboro City Council. Early voting started July 13th and runs through July 28th. In a process that's new this year and implemented by the Rutherford County Election Commission to increase voter convenience on Election Day itself, that's August 2nd, you will be able to vote at any one of the voting centers located throughout Rutherford County. To learn which voting location will be best for you on Election Day, visit the Rutherford County Election Commission at www.ruc-o.vote. We thank you for your attention as you hear these candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about permanent issues facing our city. We hope you find this forum useful in deciding which candidates you choose to support. Remember, your vote gives you a prime opportunity to influence how government is conducted in Murfreesboro. Please make your decision known by voting. Thank you for joining us, and remember, your vote counts.
My name is Deborah Fisher, and I will serve as moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and Murfreesboro City TV, and the Murfreesboro City Cable Commission. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with their candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at City Hall and our viewers at home to this program. This evening, we will be hearing remarks from the candidates for the Murfreesboro City Council. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement in a two-minute period. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to each of those questions with a one-minute answer. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I want to thank all the candidates for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Speaking first is Madeline Scales-Harris. Mrs. Scales-Harris, you may make your opening statement. You will have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I'd like to thank Murfreesboro Cable for recording, and I'd like to thank the people in the audience for being present, and those of you that are out, thank you so much for tuning in. I would like to take this opportunity first to give my condolences to Baron Glenn. Baron was a candidate for the City Council, and he and his wife lost their baby in delivery, and you have my prayers, Baron. I'm homegrown. I was born and raised here in Murfreesboro. I attended the elementary schools of Bradley and Bellwood. I went to Central Middle. I graduated in 1970, and I graduated from MTSU. I'm retired from State Farm. I'm one of three children, or one of six children. Three of us are left. I have a son, my pride and joy, Robert, 35 years old, and my granddaughter, Mariah, who's 21 months old, who's the love of my life. I volunteer on several boards and groups. I volunteer at a lot of hospice, the Senior Citizen Board, the Library Board, and I just want to say that I enjoy serving the citizens of Murfreesboro. I've served since 2010, and with your support, I pray to continue to serve you the best citizens this side of heaven.
Next is Rick LaLance. You may make your opening statement.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Like I said, my name is Rick LaLance, and I'm also a Murfreesboro native here beside Ms. Scales-Harris. I want to also thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. This is always a great event. It's good to be able to get the exposure, and hopefully, there's a lot of people tuning in. I've just felt really compelled, I guess after four years, to always in all of our forums and places where we've been together, to thank all the other candidates. It's, I have a different perspective now from doing it for the last four years. It's really awesome to push yourself out there and to get out there and try to serve your community. So, I'm, like I said, a native of Murfreesboro, been here all my life. I've got a wife of almost 20 years. That'll be here in October. I've got a son, Adam, who's 17, a daughter, Allison, who's 14, both of which will be at Segal High School this year. You know, I guess, why am I serving, or why am I looking to serve another two, another four years? Is, you know, continue to do my best to listen to citizens and develop ideas to better serve them, use my financial experience to work on, you know, the hard budget issues that we have coming, continue to work on things like fair and competitive pay for our employees, and all the other challenges that are in front of us. I look forward to working on them. So, hopefully, I'll ask for your vote, and hopefully, we'll have another four years. Thanks.
Okay. Next is Ronnie Martin. Mr. Martin, you may make your opening statement.
Hello. My name is Ronnie Martin. I want to also thank the League of Women Voters for having us here and for all those in attendance. I also want to thank my boss, Ben Weatherford, for allowing me this opportunity, and for my wife and family who've been very supportive of this. I could not have done this without you, so, thank you. I'm a local graduate at Riverdale High School. Went to Middle Tennessee State University, got a degree in economics, also received an MBA from MTSU. Went to LSU for a Graduate School of Banking degree there. It's those experiences that, and that background that I feel like would be valuable at the council level, and it's one of the reasons I became interested in serving on council. As I mentioned, I have a wife and four children. My wife Cynthia Martin is, she's from Last Cassis, but she grew up here, and she's very special to me. My children age 16 through 20, so I have three graduates and one high school senior. And I'm very proud to be in Murfreesboro. I'm very proud of our city, and I'm happy to be here, and I would humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Nancy Renear. Ms. Renear, you have...
Thank you. I'm so sorry. I have that springtime stuff going on. I'm Nancy Renear, and unlike these folks, I was not born here. I was born in Chicago. Lived most of my life in Indiana. I went to Ball State University. That's Ball, B-A-L-L, as in the mason jars, not V-O-L. Ball State University in Muncie, Indiana, right behind David Letterman. Does that get me points? Got my degree in elementary education, and then we moved here. My husband was transferred here. I have two wonderful children. My son gave me my first grandchild 16, no, excuse me, 19 months ago, and we're going to have another one at Christmas. My daughter is a little rat fink. She's moving to Australia, so that's difficult for me right now, but we'll make it through that. I taught in Murfreesboro 29 and 1/2 years. I have a total of 37 and 1/2 years teaching, excuse me, I'm so sorry, 37 and 1/2 years teaching through other states before we moved here. I've been serving on the city school board as the vice chair now for six years. I love that role. Obviously, my whole life's been spent in education. One of our school board candidates, Roseanne Barton, was my principal. We taught together, and then she became my principal, so we have a special connection there. I taught with her mother at Last Cassis. I want to serve the citizens of Murfreesboro. I feel like that's what I've been doing actually my whole life, because every family I met and dealt with were, I was advocating for their children and their education. I served those families. I want to continue doing that, and I hope you'll support me in this election.
Next is Teri Schneider. Ms. Schneider, you may make your opening statements.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Teri Schneider. I have been married for 17 years, and I have two children. I own a local business here in the downtown area. I have extensive background with the nonprofits. I serve on the Board of Directors for the United Way as well as the American Red Cross. I'm also a Leadership Rutherford graduate and serve on the council with that as well. I'm confident that my background with the, in my private sector world, gives me a unique perspective to help with the city in seeing a different viewpoint and stuff. I'm committed to being a strong advocate for our city, for our businesses and our families. I believe in smart growth, financially responsible growth, and I look forward to serving the community. I ask for your vote on August 2nd.
Okay. Speaking next is Shon Wright. Mr. Wright, you may make your opening statements.
Good evening. My name's Shon Wright, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me, and for all that our attendance and watching it on Channel 3 and on Facebook Live. I am from a multi-generational Murfreesboro family. I'm proud to have the last name Wright. I'm happily married for 15 years with three boys, just a little over one-year-old, a seven-year-old, and a 12-year-old. I grew up in the, I went to school at Mitchell Nelson. I was in the first two years of Casey Lane. I even had to, when I was at Casey Lane, we had to go to school in Northfield Gymnasium for half the year because the school wasn't ready yet. I graduated from Oakland High School, continued on to MTSU for a bachelor's in economics, and then went to the University of Memphis with an MBA in finance. Continued on to UT Knoxville with some certifications in lean process management and business analytics. With my education and the experience I have helping some local businesses on top of my normal job, I'm able to look at a budget, look at a business, look at the processes that business does, and really break them down, and able to cut, cut without cutting people and cutting things, cut processes. I think I'm a, I think that's a very good quality. I ask for your vote, and I'm a fiscal conservative. I like spending two pennies together, miss, what I'm all about. So, I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll now turn to our first question, and this question will be answered first by Mr. LaLance. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question, and I'll repeat the question for each candidate.
One minute.
One minute. Right. Here's the question. Okay. In your opinion, what are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
Let's see. I guess the first thing that comes to my mind is a list format, because there's a lot. You know, the waste management, which would include, we're going to have to have a lot of processes there, including recycling, figuring out how we're going to expand and what we're going to do about a landfill. I think the challenge there is much about money and a lot about some other things that we care to have in our community or not to have in our community, but it's going to be a multi-step approach. There's going to have to be a lot of thought and effort. We've tried to do that over the last couple of years, and we'll continue to do that, know that the end is nearing for our current solution. You know, I've also advocated for smart planning for our city as we grow. We have to have infrastructure in place. We have to do proper planning to make sure our zoning is there and that we can achieve the things we need to achieve. That's about all I can get out in one minute.
Okay. All right. Mr. Martin, what are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
I think, you know, Rick talked about the solid waste issue. Obviously, that's a big concern for the county and the city. One of the things that I would like to see us take a close look at is, as we're budgeting and we go through that process, you know, we've been dependent upon reserve funds to balance our budget. I think when and where it's appropriate for us to, which the council did a great job, we cut about, or the council cut about $2.4 million from the budget this year. But, you know, our city is, has been very fortunate to have a tremendous phase of growth, and we're depending largely on that revenue coming from sales tax and from sales of gateway land. And I think that's something that, long-term, is not a great solution that we need to look away from. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Renear, in your opinion, what are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
Well, first of all, I think many of us want Murfreesboro to be rather metropolitan, but still have this small-town feel. And I think that in order to do that, based on the growth that we're having, we heard this with the school board conferences as well, the growth is such a big issue, so this is going to be quite a challenge. I know we have to worry about the trash mountain. I know that we have to worry about growth and infrastructure in order to keep all these things going. When people come to Murfreesboro and want to look at Murfreesboro as a place to live, they ask about what extra do we have, whether that be recreation, whether that be senior center, whether that be the goods and services, or services, excuse me. The traffic is such an issue. We've got lots of things that we need to work on, and I hope that we can work toward that 2035 plan as a good start, but we have lots of other things to do.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schneider, what do you think are the biggest challenges facing the city of Murfreesboro?
Right now, our biggest challenges are going to be waste management, which they also pointed out. We're going to have to start looking at some other communities, see what they've implemented in their community to be able to address that and maybe put that into play here. I think keeping up with the growth and making sure that we have the infrastructure, making sure that we have the schools, and making sure that we have the revenue in order to pay for all those things, because while we have to be able to maintain all those, we also want to give our citizens a good quality of life. So, I think those will be our biggest challenges.
Okay. Mr. Wright, what do you think are the biggest challenges facing the city?
Well, I think we've heard a lot of great challenges. Waste management, which I have a plan for, we'll speak on later. We've got infrastructure, we've got smart growth, but it really all boils down to money, fiscal responsibility, fiscal spending, budgetary means. You've heard everybody talk about how we've got to be able to pay for this stuff. Well, we can't cut $2.4 million out of the budget and spend nearly $500,000 on a mountain bike trail. It's just not fiscally responsible. So, it all comes down to the budget.
Okay. And Mrs. Scales-Harris, what do you think are the biggest challenges facing the city?
I think our roads is a big challenge. Our hands are tired, as far as our roads concerned, because we have to depend on our state and federal government for funding. It also takes time, because we have to get appraisals, we have to look at the right-of-ways, we have to check for artifacts, so all of this takes time. Better jobs for our people with a vibrant city like Murfreesboro, and we have people working two and three jobs. We need to try to do something about that. Affordable housing, I think that's a big thing we need to deal with. And with the growth, we need to be able to maintain the funds that we have coming in for the things that we need to spend it on.
Okay. We'll start with our, we'll go to our second question, and Mr. Martin will answer this question first. Mr. Martin, what would you like to accomplish during your term in office?
Thank you. If it's possible, and I think it is, for us to move away from relying upon the general fund to balance the budget, I'd like to see that happen. I think the council has put a good place, a good plan in place to move away from that, so I think they deserve a lot of credit for that. If elected, that's something that I would help reinforce from the standpoint of having a background in banking and looking at budgets on a regular basis. I think that's a very responsible thing to do from a use of citizens' dollars. The other thing is to, when and where appropriate, see what we can do to maximize the dollars we spend from an infrastructure standpoint to alleviate as much traffic as we can. Vice Mayor Scales mentioned some of the limitations to do that because of the state road issues, but I think we need to work harder and look at that. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Renear, what would you like to accomplish during your term in office?
I would like to be an advocate for the citizens of Murfreesboro. I think that, pardon me again, pardon me. I think as a, an at-large board, as city council as this is, we need to represent everyone. So, I think that what you can tell us what your concerns are, I think that's very important. I want to be a good listener. I want to be an advocate, and I want this city to continue to grow in a, in more of an informed way, not let things get ahead of us like I think they had done previously, and now we're playing catch-up. So, I just want to be an advocate for everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schneider, what would you like to accomplish in your term of office?
I think what I would like to accomplish is pretty basic. It's just to improve the life of our city's citizens here. We have a great city, and I think that keeping things, our budget balanced, making sure that we have the money to pay for everything, to improve our quality of life, I just really, that's what I'd like to accomplish at the end of this, is just for everybody to have moved forward in their lives.
Okay. And Mr. Wright, what would you like to accomplish in your term of office?
I would like to be the most transparent, communicable city councilman on the council. I want, when people have an issue, I want to be able to communicate with them, get them an answer that day, and move forward. I don't want to hear any, I don't want to be the one that people complain about, is this city councilman does not respond, or this city councilman won't get me an answer, or this person doesn't want to do that. I hear a lot of those complaints as I'm talking to constituents, and I don't want to hear those. I want to be the one that's as transparent as possible and will always communicate.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Scales-Harris, what would you like to accomplish in your term of office?
I would like to see our citizens get more involved in government. I would like them to find and bring us ways to make them feel like they are a part of our government by bringing people together. I want to continue to be a good listener, and not only to listen, I want to hear, and when I hear, then I listen, and when I listen, I react, and I think that's very important. I'd like to keep a balanced budget as much as possible, and I'd like to look at programs that entail people that we have not, for instance, like maybe veterans. Not only on Veterans Day do we recognize veterans, let the veterans go to the schools and let the veterans teach kids what it's, what it's like being a veteran, what it's like serving our country, just things that we can continue to do to bring our community together.
Okay. And Mr. LaLance, what would you like to accomplish in your term of office?
Yeah, so that's probably another list question. I kind of would preface it by saying that, you know, sometimes it's a curse to have the idea of constant improvement. You know, what, when you look for things, you're trying to do better. It's not necessarily that you think things aren't going well, but you're just trying to make them better, and I guess that goes along with a little bit of my list, but, so some of these things we're doing, I just want to build on that. You know, a couple of things that I'd be passionate about is continue to try to do everything that we can do to attract higher-paying jobs. I think we really need to do that. We talked about traffic and traffic going to Nashville, and I think we have the workforce here to accomplish this, and if we really put some effort behind that, I think we can succeed. You know, obviously, another big, it's something we've already talked about, accomplishment would be to build a long-term plan for this waste management. I think that's going to take a lot of thought and a lot of effort and a lot of brainpower and a lot of people to make that work. And obviously, I think we've taken some strides here lately, and we'll try to continue to work towards that balanced budget.
Okay. Now, we'll move to our third question, and this question will be answered first by Mrs. Renear. Mrs. Renear, what specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
Could you repeat that?
Yes.
I got part of it down. What specific ideas?
What specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
That's a great question. First of all, I would advocate for reasonable land purchases. When we were looking for land for the schools, there are sources and there are people who sometimes are willing to give land, I'm sorry, and that may be a possibility, or have a developer who will start a lower-income neighborhood. The things that are going for sale now are at, golly, the high 200s, if not $300,000. For affordable housing, we've got to come up with a place and a style and just something that's going to work, perhaps something like Westbrook Towers. We've got to find somewhere and somewhere to put it.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Schneider. What would you, what specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
Well, affordable housing is the number-one call that 2-on-1 gets at the United Way each month, so that's definitely an issue facing a lot of people here in our community. Unfortunately, building materials and building costs are skyrocketing, and so that's causing everything to go up. So, I think really the goal of this would be that we have to attract better, higher-paying jobs. We've got MTSU in our backyard that we should be drawing off of, and we should be able to be attracting some of the higher-paying, better companies. That way, those individuals can make a move up on that ladder, and it wouldn't be so tough for them to get affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright. What specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
As a Realtor, this is something I work with on a daily basis, and there's not a real good option to it, because the number-one thing that creates the housing price are the inputs. When you have land that costs what the land costs now, and you have the building materials what they cost, you're kind of building a brand-new house. You're at $250,000 right out of the gate. It's hard to build an inexpensive house, and with the growth that we have and with the amount of people we have moving into the area, because we're such a great community, it just keeps raising that demand higher and higher and higher, which in turn, using simple economics, raises the price higher and higher and higher. The one option is to look at alternative type of things, whether it's crate houses or high-rises or something like that, where you can actually lower the cost by doing scale. That way, you don't have to worry about single-family houses and large land costs that just push the price higher.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Scales-Harris, what specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
Well, it really boils down to supply and demand. It's a tough thing, but we must look at what the market can really bear. The more density, that's a big issue, and we have to look at regulations like water quality and the drainage problems. Those are all big, high-dollar things. And believe it or not, Murfreesboro housing is cheaper than housing around us, and we are still struggling. So, once approved, another big thing, once the people get a loan, then they don't have the cash, and they can't make the down payments and the closing costs, so we need some type of assistance to help people make their down payments and clothing costs, closing costs. And another thing, if they move from one house to the other, they can't afford to move because it's so expensive, so we need to work with suppliers and give some incentives.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LaLance. What would you do, or what specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
Well, I think there's been some good points already brought up, you know, the higher-paying jobs. There's two factors to affordability. One is how much the house costs, the other is how much money the citizens make, right? So, certainly, doing more to attract those higher-paying jobs, that helps affordability on that end, and I think Mr. Wright is correct to say that, you know, and Ms. Scales-Harris, that the supply and demand is a power that is difficult to combat just with some sort of a government program. So, you know, I think one of the things that we have done recently is increased some density with some zoning possibilities, but some zoning ordinances, but we've tried to do that in a way where we're, where we're doing that wisely. We didn't put, you know, not putting too much density in one area. We've just recently built a density map to try to address that. The other thing that I think we ought to continue to do is work with organizations that, the help like Habitat for Humanity and those kinds of things to help address it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. What specific ideas would you advocate to ensure good housing options for low and moderate-income households?
Thank you. I think, I think the point of jobs, higher-paying jobs, is a point well-taken that was mentioned. I think it's very true that this is an economic issue as much as anything. It is just challenging for a community to grow and provide affordable options if you do not have the job base that can provide... do not have the job base that can provide the necessary income that people can afford to purchase homes. I think what you will see is what has happened to us, you know, Murphysboro benefits from the growth of the surrounding counties, specifically Nashville, but in addition to that, that challenge will help surrounding counties and cities grow, because affordable homes are not here. So, the question begs, how do we do that? And I think some of that is purely an economic issue, and I think others go back to creating better-paying jobs, attracting those. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, now, we're going to go to our fourth question, and this question will be answered first by Mrs. Schneider. How do you think the city of Murphysboro could improve its waste management services?
Okay. So, I think that what we need to do is start looking at other communities. I've said that before. I'm an advocate for learning from other people's mistakes, and other people where they've gone to, and what works and what doesn't work. So, I think that we definitely need to start looking at some of the other communities. There's Sevier County, they're doing some good things over there, and, you know, definitely, if we can take a look at what they're doing, and see if we can put those into place, also think that we need to put into a recycling program. That way, we can start limiting what goes in there. I think that both of those will be really important in order to solve this issue.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. Wright, how do you think the city of Murphysboro could improve its waste management services?
In my opinion, it's a three-stage approach. The first approach is continue on what we have right now with a short-term goal of outsourcing recycling throughout the city, where you do both at the same time. When you add the recycling in, that is then a short-term response to adding a high-temper incinerator that can burn the trash up, capture the gases, and then the gases can then run the, put back into the incinerator to run the incinerator, plus, you can also sell the methane off to put money back into the municipality. It's a totally green project, and it self-pays. It's literally no expense once you get the system up and running.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mrs. Scales-Harris, what do you think the city of Murphysboro could do to improve its waste management services?
Well, with the landfill getting ready to close very shortly, we need to look at recycling. You'd be surprised, it's very little trash we have once we recycle. I've been doing a little research on that, and I think it's important here, again, that we move fast, and we have an option curbside, and you're dealing with the carts and the bins, and then you have, and we can decide whether we want to handle it or go with vendors, and then we have a drop-off, then you're going to say, how many drop-offs do we need? Is it better to man it, or get someone else to do it? Second option is the recycling partnership that Atlanta uses, and they have what they call the recovery, material recovery facility, and it's a nonprofit funded by Coca-Cola, and we have to look at the end process. Is it going to be a burning process used for fuel, or at the end, plastics used for, we sell it to carpet companies, cardboard, we sell it to paper companies? So, we have to definitely look at that.
Okay. Mr. LaLance, how do you think the city of Murphysboro could improve its waste management services?
Yeah, so, you know, we're a little bit limited on what can be done in the next few years until the current situation expires, and we're under a contract that is really good for the city, and it's been really good for 20-some-odd years, where we don't pay tipping fees, we're so close, which is, obviously, has its pros and cons, but the fact that we're that close means we take that trash straight from your driveway to the landfill, and we don't pay a tipping fee. That's all going to change pretty soon, so we need to be able to address that financially. There's some steps that have been put in place to try to start that process, and I think that's going to be a big help. We will have to look into outsourcing recycling, that's obviously got to be a part of it. One of the issues right now is when we only put, when the city of Murphysboro only puts 3% of the waste in the current landfill, recycling doesn't have a big impact, but with the solution maybe six years from now, or seven years from now, when we're looking at a different site, it could be much more impactful. I'm out of time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Martin, how do you think that the city should improve its waste management services?
You know, I think the citizens of Murphysboro have had the trash service provided for a long time, and I think one of the things that the landfill use coming to an end brings about the opportunity for us to work with the county, and not take on the full burden of trying to do that ourselves. I mean, we can partner with our county, you know, I think there's an opportunity to share in that, and collaborate with that group for a better solution, without feeling like we have to come up with that solution ourselves. But, you know, the Water and Sewer Department is doing some really good things under the council's leadership by reducing the biosolids that are being put in the landfill. There's a project for that now that will decrease the dependence upon that, and again, I think a cooperative partnership with the county is where we should go.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mrs. Rineer, how do you think the city of Murphysboro could improve its waste management services?
Well, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think we're going to have to move to a recycling program, and because we're talking about low-income families, I know there would be money that would have to be spent to buy more trucks, but if we could hire some of these folks who are looking for jobs, and hire them to drive the recycling trucks, every family gets a bin, and we start recycling and start a program that way. I know it would be expensive at the beginning, but hopefully, we could move to more of a zero-waste-type program, which would take many years to fulfill, but I was researching some of that, and they talked about the best way to start is with recycling, and hopefully, we could kill two birds with one stone, move our recycling products elsewhere, and also give jobs.
Okay. Thank you. Moving to our next question, this question will be answered first by Mr. Wright. What do you think the city's role should be in providing public transportation?
Well, that's a difficult question. Historically, in the South, Southerners don't like public transportation. We like our freedom, we like to get in a car, we like to drive, we like to leave when we want to leave, and we don't really want to wait for a bus to do it, or a train to do it. There are some needs going towards Davidson County with people going to work and from work, that's created a logjam of traffic, but instead of spending that money on public transportation, I think we should spend the money enticing those higher-paying jobs to come here, those state jobs to come here, enticing flex time, enticing people to work from home that work in Nashville. Let's work with those companies to keep those people in Murphysboro, instead of shipping our citizens to Nashville.
Okay. And, Mrs. Scales-Harris, what do you think the city's role should be in providing public transportation?
Well, we have a lot of people coming here. We're averaging about 300 people a month coming and staying, so there are a lot of people, and we're getting a lot of national recognition, and because they feel it's a great place to be, and it is a great place to be, but our challenge is to look at, how are we going to get people from point A to point B without using their vehicles? That's the challenge. And, it may be that we do away with Rover and get larger buses, or we could look at expending our hours, expending our days of service, and we've been named the sporting capital of the South, so we're going to have a lot of sporting events, so we need to, I think, in, at one point, we're going to have to look at increasing buses, and the size of our buses.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. LaLance, what do you think the city's role should be in providing public transportation?
Yep. So, the Rover program is a great program. We have done, I say we, the councils before, before the last four years, have done a great job setting it up as it relates to how inexpensively we've been able to do it with grants and things like that, so we get a lot of bang for our buck on those, on that program as it sits right now. You know, I think the primary role is to get people to jobs. If you're just asking what the role should be for, you know, the city, if there was the number-one incentive for us to provide that, we'd be able to get people from where they live to where they work, and that was encourage, you know, that's, obviously, encourage employment, which is always good. The ancillary benefit of it, I believe, is the traffic, where the more people in one vehicle, the less traffic on the road, which is, I think, something that we all want.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. Martin, what do you think the role should be in providing public transportation?
I think, I think the city, I think the responsibility is to make sure that we're serving as many citizens as we possibly can with the transportation plan. I think the council's done a good job. We just, not we, the council, I've attended a lot of meetings, so I get carried away sometimes, but, but the council's done a great job by, you know, there's a transportation plans for a transportation center to be put in the Bottoms area. That will provide, I think, a conduit and an outlet for increased transportation. I think you've got a segment of the community, one of the things I did to, you know, try to be competent and prepared to do this job, is, you know, I spent about four hours on the Rover, and so you get an opportunity to take a look at who's riding the Rover, and who's using that, and there are people in the community that that's the only means of transportation they have to get to the hospital, and so, you know, it gives you a different perspective when you actually spend some time to look at those things. Now, you know, there are bigger issues, but I'm out of time. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And, Ms. Rineer, what do you think the city's role should be in providing public transportation?
To me, this is another one of those issues where I think we need public input. We might say that, oh, yes, we're going to go ahead and buy 88-passenger buses to send them back and forth to Nashville at these specific times of the day, and then when you have no ridership, it's not accomplished anything other than to cost you money. So, I think, again, this would be something that we would, we, the city council, would need to hear from the public. What do you want? Is Rover enough? Do we need something larger? Do we need a better program? And I think that public input's always the way to go.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mrs. Schneider, what do you think the city's role should be in providing public transportation?
Well, I think we do a pretty good job right now with the Rover buses, and I think that we could maybe extend some of those hours and some of those routes to service some more of the community, and we really, as Shaun said, you know, need to look at, you know, look, working with companies, getting them here, that way, we don't have to worry about sending our people up to Nashville. I just definitely think that flex time is a great way of doing that. I did that as well for a number of years, so I think that we should be looking at some of the options of extending Rover, and, again, seeing what we need to put in place for everybody to be able to make it where they need to go.
Okay. Thank you. We are now on our last question, and I'd like to remind the candidates that you'll have two minutes to answer this question and give your closing remarks, and we will be starting with Mrs. Scales-Harris on this question. In your opinion, what are currently the greatest strengths and weaknesses of the city of Murphysboro?
Well, our strengths are the way that we bring different things to the city that accommodates the needs of people. That's a strength I think we have. Our strength is also a community that comes together in a crisis. For instance, when the group came here, we came together as a community, and we showed America that we also can bring God in what we do, because we came together as churches, and we prayed. Our weaknesses are finding ways to accommodate the people that are coming into Murphysboro, and they'd be able to share the great amenities that we do have. You've heard from me this evening, and now it's time for me to hear from you. Over the past eight years, I've done the best I know how to be a councilperson you can trust, I'm easily accessible, you can depend on me to listen to your concerns, and if it's fair, I'll count, I will fight for you, and if you, and if I don't make it in this election, I want to take this opportunity to personally thank each and every one of you for eight great years of serving you, and if I do make it, and I am re-elected, I will continue to do everything that I can to listen to you, be your voice, speak up, and follow through. I can't win this election without you. I need your help. And, in my lifetime, I've been through segregation, integration, humiliation, which gives me determination to love and not hate. I love each and every one of you, and I've proven it by my track record. I need you to get out and vote. It's a long name. Madeline Scales-Harris. Thank you.
Mr. LaLance, in your opinion, what are the, currently the greatest strengths and the weaknesses of the city of Murphysboro?
I'm a, sort of, build on what she said here, you know, the people in Murphysboro are the strength. I mean, just an awesome place to be, awesome place to live. It's so cool, you know, getting out and doing what we've been doing, where we're campaigning, and talking to people on street corners, and around the square, and all that kind of stuff. You really, kind of, it's really refreshing to hear from a lot of different people, from a lot of different areas of town, and just see, you know, over the last four years doing this, it's just an honor to be able to deal with people, and to try to serve. I mean, it's so cool. You know, our employees are great, our police and firefighters are awesome. I mean, you know, every time I'm at my house out in the yard, and I hear a siren go off, I understand that somebody putting their life on the line for our folk, you know, for the people who live here, and they do such a wonderful job, and are just committed as they can be. Our schools are great, you know, the overall quality of life here is incredible, the greenways, the parks, you know, what we're doing with downtown, and, you know, when I say "we," it's not, I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily referring to the city council, I'm referring to the city, you know, the people that are here, and just the city as a whole, because that's who we represent. So, you know, maybe one of the weaknesses is how we've, how we have dealt with the growth. It's tough, man. You know, that's all I can say about it. It's just hard, and so, you get up here, and you do what you can do, and try your best, and we try to deal with that, and come up with fiscally responsible ways to do it, because it has to be that way for our future. So, thanks again to the League Women Voters, thanks to the candidates up here, thanks for everybody watching, and the folks here in the crowd. I hope I've earned your vote. My name is Rick LaLance. It's kind of long, let's see, maybe second-longest, so, that's all right, it works with me, too, so, thanks again.
Okay. And, Mr. Martin, what are currently the greatest strengths and weaknesses of the city of Murphysboro in your opinion?
Thank you. I would say, you know, and I said this in my opening remarks, I'm really proud to live in Murphysboro. I think we've got a great community, I think we have a great quality of life. I think sometimes we can lose sight of that because of some of the daily issues that come up, and some of the frustrations that we have, but I'm proud of who we are, and I'm proud of our city. I think our city employees are a real strength. I can tell you, I've spent the past six months, you know, immersing myself in our local government, trying to learn and meet, learn as much and meet as many people as possible, and they're just an impressive group. You know, the level of service that we receive, that I think a lot of times we can take for granted, it's impressive, if you stop and think about it, and so, I'm very proud of that. I think those are the strengths, if, you know, from a weakness standpoint. I think we have had a lot of struggles the past year from the standpoint of turnover with a city manager, and rehiring of a city manager, and I think, you know, people have been frustrated about some of the projects that we've had that haven't gone exactly the way I think the average person thinks they should have gone within the community. So, we can get better. You know, there's, all of us can get better. And so, those are the things from a strengths and weakness standpoint that I would point out. I'll leave you with that, I'm very proud of the council that we have, I'm very proud of the mayor that we have. I would love to be a part of helping lead Murphysboro, and I would ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mrs. Rineer, what do you think are the current greatest strengths and weaknesses of the city of Murphysboro?
We have so many things that we should be thankful for. Many have already, excuse me, many have already been mentioned, as far as the services that we have for people moving to our town. We have, we waited a long time for the bridge over Broad, and isn't it a great thing? The recreation facilities that we have, parks, ballfields, soccer fields, tennis courts, Well, a question that I have heard from constituents has been, why don't we have an ice rink? So, that might be something Parks and Rec needs to look at next. The Greenway is something that everyone in this town cherishes. We have great safety features with our firemen, our police officers, and our EMTs. Our first responders are top-notch. We have excellent schools. I can attest to that all my time there, and the time that I've I can attest to that all my time there and the time that I've spent on the school board. If you have excellent schools, you're going to invest in your future. The one thing that I think, or some things that I think might be a little, a little bit of a weakness, is how are we going to deal with hunger in Murfreesboro, and how are we going to deal with homelessness? Because we all know that is an issue that needs to be addressed. I know that it was addressed earlier, and people will get ticketed if they stop on the corners, whatever. So I know that some things can be done. To put that all aside, I would love to be able to serve Murfreesboro. I worked on budgets with our city school system, line by line, we go over those budgets, and I know it's a big ordeal for each department. I know for city council, it has to be tremendous. But I feel like I'm the person who can do that. I want to serve the public. I would really appreciate your vote on August 2nd or before July 28th. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Schneider, what do you consider are the greatest strengths and weaknesses of the city of Murfreesboro right now?
Well, I think one of the greatest strengths that we have is our community spirit. I saw that with the tornadoes and with the rally recently. I mean, the way the community comes together and helps one another out, and as diverse as we are, I think that's just a true testament to how great we are and how great our city is. I think we've got great first responders with our police and fire and EMTs. Again, that goes back to even the last two events that I just mentioned. Those guys are just phenomenal. I think we've got a great quality of life here. We've got great parks, we've got great schools, we enjoy a lot of things about our community, and I think that sometimes we take those for granted. I think our weaknesses, I think keeping up with the growth and keeping up with the infrastructure, I think that's going to be a challenge as we go forward. And then, my name's Teri Schneider. It's not super long, but it's kind of long. I would respectfully ask for your vote on August 2nd, so, and I'm available if anybody has any questions afterwards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. In your opinion, what are currently the greatest strengths and greatest weaknesses of the city?
I think I'm going to second, third, or fourth, whatever. We were talking about the people of Murfreesboro. The people are what make Murfreesboro great. It doesn't matter if you're a city employee, an average citizen on, just at a house, or who you are in the city. Murfreesboro's people are what make Murfreesboro great. There's not another place on this planet with the people that are as cordial as the people here, the camaraderie here in our community, and just the brotherhood and sisterhood we feel in Murfreesboro. And as far as a weakness goes, I think it's a close tie. The handling of the growth and being proactive as a city instead of reactive, and the handling of the homeless. Those are a close one and two. When we look at infrastructure, we should plan the infrastructure in the schools and the parks, everything around where we are growing. I mean, all these plans and developments come in front of the planning commission and the city council. We know where the growth is, we know where the developments go, we know where those growth areas are. We can correct those issues before they get bad. And then the homeless situation, who should say how to fix that? I mean, we just got to figure out a way. We've got six great candidates sitting up here, all the way from Mrs. Scales-Harris all the way to myself. There's six great candidates. You get three votes between now and July 28th and on August 2nd. I don't care if I'm your first vote, your second vote, or your third vote, but I humbly ask you for your vote. I'm the right guy that helps the city council, hey?
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters in the city of Murfreesboro, I want to thank all of the candidates for their participation today. I also want to recognize Murfreesboro Communications Director Alan Bozeman and his staff, and the Murfreesboro Cable Commission for their cooperation in presenting this program on Murfreesboro City TV located on Comcast Channel 3, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and on the city's website. I want to encourage all Murfreesboro citizens to vote. Early voting began July 13th and continues through July 28th. Election Day is August 2nd. Please exercise this important right to determine who will be your Murfreesboro City Council. Remember, your vote counts. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates.